The November 25th, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. But a courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting to everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Leeley, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
After thirty minutes, we provide for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised this evening. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item on matters which the board customary takes action, you must first complete a golden rod form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a green form. Those forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the procedures that the school board has adopted. A copy is available to you from Mr. Kevin Christian or one of the front tables. Audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parents or legal guardian or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, the school board by a majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Brenda, do we have any speakers this afternoon?
We have no speakers this evening.
Mr. Christian, a Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading the pledge this evening.
Board members, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to welcome Ms. Brianna Lyles to our podium this evening. She is a Prevention Specialist with the Children's Alliance, and she's going to share some great information with us. I'm sure you will appreciate what she has to say.
Thank you, Board, for having me. Thank you, Mr. James, for inviting me today. For those of you who don't know, since 2011, I have been the Chair of Generation Fit. Generation Fit is the childhood nutrition work group that serves under the Marion County Children's Alliance under the direction of Dr. Michael Jordan. We are focused on reducing childhood obesity in Marion County and also improving the overall nutrition of our community members, focusing on adults, parents, and other family members. Much of our efforts, as some of you may remember, was funded by the PEP grant, which was a few years ago. That grant was about three years. It was a total of $900,000 that we received, and we made a lot of strides, including a campaign called 5210. I don't know if you guys remember that. But since the PEP grant has run out, we've been getting small grants here and there to help fund some of our projects, like the Healthy Recipe Contest, which you guys all have the cookbook. Other projects like Family Fun Day, the Glow Run, which we did last August. But most recently, we've spent much of the summer writing for a new grant. It's a grant that will hopefully bring in about $4 million over three years into Marion County to help combat chronic disease, including childhood obesity, diabetes, and smoking. So my reason for being here today, though, is that we really need the support of Marion County schools. You guys obviously are the largest employer in the county, and you serve 35,000 students. Is that correct?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, sorry. Forty-two thousand students that we could impact in a way that would extremely change our community, the way that they grow up, and reduce obesity by the next generation. As you can see, I've given you a little newsletter on some of the events that we already coordinate, but we're hoping that with the support of Marion County schools, we can also create some new programs, offer some of the programs that we now have to charge. We may be able to offer those for free, and then also provide staff members to go into the schools, attend after-school programs, attend community events, to educate our community on healthy eating, healthy lifestyles, and nutrition. Thank you very much. Okay, now for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you.
I'm going to be using this cookbook. I see some good recipes in here. The cookbooks that they passed out are recipes from our students, so this is going to be exciting. The first one, I'll make our report on it until you all.
You can bring us samples.
Yes.
Great. I have to brag, one of my students is in here, and actually, I had like four or five the year before, and they really enjoyed this.
So thank you so much for presenting this to us.
One of the things, Madam Chair, is that I just want to just share this. The Children's Alliance works really close with the school board, and this is an opportunity for us to look at one of the problems that we all face in terms of obesity. And this not only affects us in what we do in our schools, but it also affects us in what we do in our community. Hopefully, things like this project, as we teach kids about eating, and hopefully, it will branch out into their homes. So when I was out there working with Dr. Jordan and his group, this was one of the things I thought all of us should be aware of.
Yes.
And try and really persuade them to be part of our group in terms of our nutritional programs we have in the school district. We look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Any more comment, Board?
I have a question. Is this primarily in the elementary schools where you're working? What you're focusing on with the healthy lunches?
Actually, we started in elementary. The cookbook was one of our first big projects about five years ago. It was for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Most recently, we've extended an after-school nutrition and exercise program to all the elementaries. We have it in two middle schools right now. We've been working in Howard. And then hopefully, with the grant money, we'll be able to extend the after-school program to all the middle schools.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great. The extended program has been awesome, helping to work with us and get nutrition into their school program.
Okay, thank you.
Board? Mr. Superintendent, please.
Board members, with the exception of J.D. 1520 under item S.D. 41, I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 25th, 2014 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included, as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The vote was unanimous, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 23rd, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, October 28th, 2014, school board meeting? May I have a motion?
Second. So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. All those in any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, white sign. The motion passed unanimous. Thank you, Board. Mrs. Judy Genetti, Public Education Foundation Officer and Board President, Nick Blazer, have a new business partner to recognize. Miss Genetti, nice to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Tomlin, good to see you again today.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sorry, but Mr. Blazer was not able to be with us this evening, but I am excited to be here, and welcome, Mrs. King and Mr. Lake, and you'll be seeing a lot of me, I hope, at your school board meetings, because I always love to be here, because I'm bringing you good news. And this evening, we have a brand-new business partner to recognize with Reddick Collier Elementary School. So I'm going to call to the podium principal, Gina Dickey, and their business partner, Mr. Mike Whitaker. And Mr. Whitaker and his firm have been actively working with Reddick Collier, and I'm excited to have them here tonight. And as you know, the business partners play a large role in our schools, not just providing financial support, but providing in-kind support and volunteer support and lots of great things at the school. And to tell you more about what's happening at Reddick Collier, Mrs. Dickey.
Hi. Well, thank you. I am very excited to have Mike Whitaker and Associates as our new business partner. They are very generous to our school, not only with the money that they give us, but also they want to help our teachers and our students in our classrooms and donate supplies as well. With their recent donation, above and beyond the donation to be our business partner, we were able to provide 39 families with food baskets this week. So we have 39 families who got their turkeys and stuffing and things like that, thanks to Mr. Whitaker and Associates, and we hope to do that again at Christmas, during the Christmas holiday. So that's just one thing that he has done for our students at Reddick Collier Elementary. So thank you and for your support and your generosity. We're happy to have you.
All right. Mr. Whitaker, would you like to say anything while you're here?
Okay.
Okay, I have these certificates, one for your office and one for Reddick Collier, and we know that you will display those proudly. Are you sure you don't want to say?
No, just thank you for allowing me to participate. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for being a part of this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blake.
Mr. Kevin Christian, would you please introduce the individuals that are here to award numerous teacher mini-grants?
I have great news for you, board members.
We'd like that.
Twenty grants worth a total of $5,409.31, and these grants are being given to teachers and media specialists this evening by the O'Callaghan Marion County Board of Realtors, and I'm going to ask their Community Awareness Committee Chair, Ms. Charlotte Axelsson, to join me at the podium. And then they have several other board members with them. Let me go ahead and introduce them to you as well. They're welcome to come up with you and support you in your presentations. She's like, "Yeah, bring them up here, fast." Mr. Randy Alverd, he's the Association President. Darlene Yount is the Association Executive. Charlotte Axelsson, you've met her, the committee chair. Larissa Ortiz, a committee member, as well as John Celebra, also a committee member. And so I'm going to turn it over to Charlotte.
All right, thank you very much. Would you like to say to the board?
No, no, I'll talk, don't worry.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just get right to it. I'm very honored that our committee and the O'Callaghan Marion County Association of Realtors is able to present this grant money to the schools. And without further ado, we'll just present the checks, and if you're present, please come up and receive your grant money. I think you had the first. Jessica Liphart from Wyamina Park Elementary. And I'll just keep going. I know only a few of them are here. Cheryl Laffey from Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary.
Get your block out there.
Thank you.
Michelle Moles from Bellevue Elementary. Sherry Sexton from East Marion Elementary. And Mr. McLean from Romeo Elementary. And James Elmore from North Marion Middle. Deborah Scott from Hillcrest. Stephen Roberts from Liberty Middle. Tracy Chin from Fork King Middle. Diane Hinson from Howard Middle.
Diane.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joanne Crowder from Howard Middle. And also Pamela Ernest from Howard Middle. Okay. Katrina Vitkus from Dunellen High. Joan Lorenko from Dunellen High. Patricia Todd from Hillcrest. Edna Mitchell from Hillcrest.
Robert Stumpf.
Robert Stumpf from North Marion High. Sheila Morgan from Vanguard High. And Nicole Sagnet from Dunellen High.
This is a program that we've been doing now for 11 years, and hopefully will continue for many years to come. Our Association Executive, Darlene Yount, puts this whole thing together, gets tons of your applications. We appreciate it. The more people that apply, the more money we can give out. So I appreciate all you do. I brought my daughters here tonight to supervise Superintendent Tom to try to get them on TV. They said no already. But appreciate all you do, and we'll hopefully continue this for many, many more years to come. All right, thank you.
Randy and Charlotte, don't go yet.
I wanted to ask you, what was the criteria for the schools to receive the money? And how much money did they get?
Well, we had a total of $6,000 to tally up, and we divided into $2,000 for elementary, middle, and high school.
Okay.
And then our criteria are basically that we want it to have basically the most bang for your buck, that it's something that's sustainable, that doesn't get used up after the first-time use, such as craft supplies or something, and that it impacts the most amount of students.
So the principals had the option to put in technology or any of the other internal accounts?
Absolutely, yeah.
So they didn't have to sell a house for you to get this money?
No, there's no criteria like that. And the grants ranged anywhere, I was just looking at the list, anywhere from $100. And again, it's really what was requested, up to, I think there were some that were just at $500, so you could use that if they requested.
Well, thank you so much for supporting our schools. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you having us.
Thank you also. For the Realtors to step up, we really sincerely appreciate you, you know. And, you know, I know you, Randy, you've been doing good work in our community, and Charlotte, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Biennello, Executive Director of Student Services, is here with James Jackson, Community Liaison, and Dr. Mike Jordan of the Marion County Children's Alliance to recognize the school-level winners of the Red Ribbon School of Spirit Awards.
Good evening, board members, and we're going to keep the theme of rewarding and recognizing schools going, keep going. It's my privilege and honor to be here tonight. And a few reminders, our Red Ribbon Week took place the week of October 23rd through October 30th. And for all the viewers who aren't familiar with Red Ribbon Week, it's our time, once a year, we spend a week, and we celebrate and we focus on the value and the importance of being substance-free, drug-free, and we also include anti-bullying strategies in there as well. So it's really a phenomenal week, and throughout that week, all the schools have a variety of activities. And one of the things that we always do as a tradition is have a competition to see which school provides the greatest red ribbon spirit. And you've heard Dr. Jordan's name tonight. He was wearing, as mentioned, he was wearing his Children's Alliance hat, but he wears, he's a man of many hats, and he also has a CASA hat that he wears, and he's always very generous. He's a very good friend to the school system, and through CASA, they have awarded $500 as an incentive for the elementary school and the middle school and the high school that showed the most spirit. So I'd like to bring up at this time, Mr. James Jackson, who is our community liaison, and Dr. Mike Jordan, as they present the winners of this year's Red Ribbon Spirit Contest.
Board members, Superintendent, thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm going to try and keep this quick and easy for you guys, but we are still coming through with the presentations like we have been tonight. We want to say that we have some great schools compete. Unfortunately, we have to narrow them down, and we have three winners, and they're here tonight. We'd just like to give them their trophies and their check. Dr. Jordan?
I have a big check and a little check, and so we'll go in order. First, in our elementary division, Eighth Street Elementary was the winner. I ask you to hold up a big check, which is that one.
Thank you so much.
Plus a trophy. In our middle school division, it was Dunellen Middle School. And then in our high school division is Marion Technical Institute.
Dr. Jordan, I want to put some names with faces here. We have Kelly Harris, Rose Thomas, and Kim Marose.
We just want to say thank you for allowing us to come up and present these awards to these wonderful winners. They did a fantastic job this year. We had lots of competition. We also would like to say thank you to CASA for financially supporting this movement, and we also would like to say thank you to CASA as well for providing personnel as well. They pull through each and every time. They always help us out. They're a great member to be partnered with. Thank you, ladies, very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Jordan, I'd like to say a couple things.
I just wanted to share, I think most of you realize, CASA is part of the Children's Alliance. It stands for the Community Council Against Substance Abuse. Marion County was one of the earliest counties in the state to have a drug coalition. It goes back about 25 years. Because of some problems, it died in 2010. The Alliance took it over, and so we're now in our fifth year, and we've done this every year, and likewise, as the Realtor said, we want to continue doing it in the future. But thank you for letting us be with you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jordan. And I want to congratulate the schools again. Eighth Street Elementary, Dunellen Middle, and Marion Technical Institute. And for all the teachers, you've done a wonderful job there. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Mr. James and Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, light sign.
Aye.
The motion, it was, the consent agenda has passed as submitted. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $7,275 to Community Tech and Adult Ed from the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,684.27 to Howard Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini-Grant Musical Hot Spot. $1,851.04 to Howard Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini-Grant Smart Music. $5,742.02 to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTO. $5,455 to Stanton Wenzel Elementary School from Parity Financial Group. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign. And today, Mr. James, would you give our thanks to our donors?
Oh, yeah. It is always a pleasure to thank people for really stepping up for Marion County schools. And again, I always like to thank Mrs. Ely, because she always keeps track of how much we've spent, but today, it's part of the, part of our time of the year where we do a lot of giving and thanking people, and I just want to make sure that we recognize these business partners for what they're doing for the Marion County school system. Thank you on behalf of the school system.
Twenty-two thousand thank-yous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely and Mr. James. Thank you. Board members, and the superintendent will be attending the Joint Conference of the Florida School Board Association and the Florida Association of District School Superintendents this week, the week of December the 1st. The next Administrative Briefing and Work Session is scheduled for Thursday, January 8th, 2015, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to receive legal orientation for the newly-seeded board and attorney, review Florida Highlands boundaries, discuss Liberty Middle School lease agreement with County Parks and Recreation, develop a legislative agenda with areas of interest concerns for 2015, as well as an ongoing discussion on the Millet Oversight Committee. An executive session will be held at the end of the December 9th school board meeting to discuss union negotiations. Do we have any comments from the end of board? I'm going to start on the end with Mr. James.
Okay, this is board concerns.
Board concerns.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for their support in presenting the information to the superintendent. I know he sent out a note, and I hope everybody sent something back in terms of a midterm report that he's working to get us information on, because this is halfway for us in terms of what we want to do and try and to improve the field district. So I want to thank the superintendent for getting this information and getting us a note out there, asking and requesting information, so he can present us a report. I'd like to put some kudos to Howard Middle School and their Builders Club, because they really have done an outstanding job of working with the community and providing support to families in need, and working with UNICEF and things of that nature, so I wanted to really just say hats off to them. And I would also like for us to really thank in terms of this, Mr. Superintendent. If we can go ahead and start looking at a task force or someone to really look at how we can improve what we're doing in the vocational areas?
December 10th.
December 10th. That's what I was looking for, and this will give us an opportunity to really address our vocational needs, and this is one of the things that, this is one of my little pet peeves, is that we take this opportunity to really get prepared to do something different in our vocational areas. Other than that, I just would like to just wish everybody a happy holiday and the best. Okay?
Thank you, and Ms. King?
I would just like to take a minute to thank everyone for just welcoming me, and I am appreciative of the... And I am appreciative of the staff just answering my questions, even if they are last minute or unforeseen. And I'm just grateful for that, and I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And Stacy?
Yes. I've got a few concerns and things. I guess, a letter to the editor from one of our great teachers kind of, kind of, has bothered me a lot. That kind of led to my comments tonight. The teaching profession used to be a very meaningful profession, and that's the reason people went into it. But today, it seems like it's almost a blue collar profession, and the teachers are kind of like widgets in the classroom. We have a, we just went through a perception report produced by the Department of Education Review Team. It's a 48-page document that concludes there's a disconnect between the district and the employees. And as far as retaining quality employees, et cetera, which kind of, even though this teacher didn't know about this report's results, kind of, his, his letter to the editor kind of dovetailed off of this. This is something that we taught, I, I talked with everyone about way back in the spring. When the teachers were contacting me, they're still contacting me, and writing me about the different issues in the school system, and that disconnect, that's, that's what's been there. We didn't really need a 48-page report to tell us that. But if that's what makes everybody happy to have a document, then we now have that that shows us this. Also, regarding that letter to the editor, the 2010 Golden Apple Teacher had to speak with us through letters to the editor. That's sad to me, that he couldn't have come before this school board and, and felt like he could say what he needed to say because his words were right on. He spoke about his experiences when he was in the business world, and how in the business world, you hired the employees that you needed to get the job done, to make the customer satisfied. And in the school system, he's asking that we do the same thing, and we meet our students' needs. He spoke about the academic coaches at the schools, which I've been talking about for two years. And all of the teachers, 100% of the teachers that were on the campaign trail running for school board this summer, also basically echoed his same concerns. You know, it's nice to have extra administrative-type employees that helps with teacher training and, and does some administrative duties, if you can afford it. But these are great teachers that have been taken out of the classroom. We've, you know, the teachers that I spoke to along the way said, "We should have been sharing academic coaches if we had to have them and not librarians. We should have had a librarian in the school and sharing the academic coaches." And this teacher, this Golden Apple Teacher, went on to say, "It's great to have support people helping us, but if, we gotta have teachers in the classroom first, and there's a shortage of teachers, and these are great teachers that are some of the academic coaches that possibly, you know, could come back into the classroom and help us out, since we're evidently in dire straits, we're having problems hiring teachers." The 2013 Public Policy Institute of Marion County came up with a report. Mrs. Zanetti has been here talking to us about that. That a lot of our issues in our community are the poor parents that are uneducated and, and have those issues. But we have no action plan. If, if that's our main problem in our school system, then I would like for us, Mrs. Boynton, to talk about having a workshop meeting to see what we can do to address. If that's the most serious problem, I think the school board should look into addressing it. We're also dangling, you know, the music and the PE in front of the community like a carrot, kind of like a little cookie on a shelf, and you're telling the kid, "You can't have it." I've been asking, this is probably, we're up to probably about day 74 that I've been asking for where we are on the budget as far as unfilled staffing plans. We're on day 74, Ms. Boynton. I spoke about it two weeks ago. And I think we're on about day 60 then. We're up to about day 74 now. But I still haven't gotten any information at all on where we are with the budget, what we have in the budget in unfilled.
I spoke to the superintendent, and they are working on it. But I also understood it changes every day.
I don't care about that. I want to know where we are today, every time I ask for it, where we are on unfilled positions on the budget. Do you have the money that we have right now that's, that's still in the budget for unfilled positions? I know we have the unfilled positions, and I also know it's kind of like a slush fund. But I want to know where, where we are with those dollars. Because we have enough money. It's a fact. As we all know, Mr. Crawford doesn't spend money that he, he can't see. We have enough money to put some of these music teachers, PE teachers, librarians back in these schools in January. And there's absolutely no reason in making something seem so difficult. And I spoke about the senior-level teachers. If, if, say, we need 30 of these positions, 15 of them are, 15 of them are senior teachers that are in classrooms right now, well, that still leaves us 15 positions that are open that we can fill to allow for the senior, the senior employees to apply for their music PE positions back without disrupting the classroom at all. And that way, we could staff the music and PE, at least in the larger schools. Because your smaller schools that have 300, 400 students, they have half of a music teacher. But a school with 800 students has a quarter of a music teacher for their students. And so I'm talking about just at least manning the schools that are the really, really large schools. Try to give those schools, there might be, I don't know, five or 10 schools. So try to give them some relief and help those teachers. But I would just, I'm just asking for a workshop to kind of go over some of these things. And Mrs. Boynton, I've known you for many years, and I've known you to be quite a leader. That's why I nominated you as chairman. I've seen you lead some very large statewide initiatives in different things. I've seen you on some national issues that you've, that's the reason I nominated you. I'm looking forward to maybe working longer hours in our workshop meetings. Maybe, we have a school district that is ranked 56th out of 67 districts in the state of Florida. We just cannot continue working three hours a week and getting the job done with a school system with a half, with a half a billion-dollar budget. And I'm asking you to possibly, on our workshops, maybe we do half a day. We go to lunch, bring lunch in. We have the second half. As long as we have issues to talk about, we need to keep rolling. We need to keep working. And, and try to get this, this elephant out of the ditch here in Marion County. But it's going to take some work and working with the superintendent, working with school board members. And our children only have one opportunity at their education. And once it's over, it's over. And I think if this board can meet and we can solve some of the issues that we've talked about, the Public Policy Institute, they're telling us what the plan is. We have no action plan. We have Golden Apple Teacher of 2010 telling us what problems are. We have, you know, we have funding of unstaffed, unfun, fin, unstaffed staffing positions. We have funding. It's just, I'm, I'm looking forward to Mrs. Boynton, to your help, to get this train back on the track. And honestly, if anybody up here on this board can do it, I think you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. And I'm going to look to the superintendent, and I'll come right back to you, Ms. Ely.
Okay.
Ms. Stacy has requested a workshop, and from what I was hearing, she wants a workshop on, to look at putting music and PE in larger schools as soon as possible. Is there any way we can have a workshop to look at where we are?
Even if it's just five schools, if it, if it helps that many students, and it's not, it's not going to disrupt a whole lot, but we can get something done in January just to get those large schools. Because the smaller schools, the smaller schools, if they're, if they've got a halftime teacher, they've got a halftime teacher. But when you go to one of the schools like Word Highlands, that teacher now becomes a quarter teacher. So those students are getting less. And actually, we have state standards that we're supposed to now be actually, I think, doing end-of-course exams in art and music. And so therefore, the students in the, in the small schools are going to have a definite advantage on how they, how they do on their music exams compared to school, students in the larger schools who are getting, you know, a quarter of the time instead of half the time. You know, just, Mr. Tom, I'm just not to totally, just, every child we help and every teacher we help, we're coming closer to meeting this perception thing about the backing of the teachers and the quality education we have here, and meeting some of the issues of some of the people that have shared their issues with us, and, and I would just like to talk to you about that.
We certainly can schedule something, and we will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and Ms. Stacy. Another, you, you mentioned that you would like for the board to have longer days. And as your board chair, I'm not just going to say that's what we're going to do.
No, but I mean, if we have issues.
If we have issues, yes.
Like if we have stuff, we don't just say, "We can't fit it in the workshop this week." We have to wait a month when, if we just had a longer day, we could have fitted in the workshop schedule.
And so board members be thinking about that, and we, and we need that. If we can come to a consensus on whatever day it will be, we can do that.
To get things done quicker.
To get things moving quicker.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stacy, and thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Ely?
I have two things I want to say. I mentioned this to you two weeks ago, our last board meeting, Ms. Stacy. But when we bring in a few art, music teachers in the middle of the year, first of all, they've been moved to other places, so it would upset a lot of, a lot of schedules, as well as the principals are not wanting to add that type of special in the middle of the year. We've told them, everything is going to be happening next fall, and everything will be in place. The media specialists, the art, music, PE. I do not believe that it's fair to bring in a few art teachers and a few music teachers, and what happens to PE and what happens to media?
Well, I'm talking about all of those. I'm not talking about just art, music. I'm talking about all four of those.
I just don't, do not believe that, I do not believe that we can bring in just some and not all. The second thing, it's my turn. The second thing I wanted to mention was it was on the consent agenda. But we have a public hearing January 13th to approve revisions to board policy on student assignment. And parents, I've talked to Ms. Crisalka about it. This is regarding the out-of-area transfers that will be allowed the fourth grading period of the year. And if there are schools that have openings and parents choose to move a school, a child to that school, that will be an opportunity to do so. The principals will be sending out information to the parents once this is approved and giving them information as to what schools there are openings to. And I, I know we'll probably hear from Mr. Burke between now and then as well. Is that correct, Ms. Crisalka?
The deadline's third quarter.
Third, oh, I'm sorry, third, which, which starts in January. Okay, third quarter, okay.
February 15th.
Okay, it will start in third quarter, so parents should be getting that information in January sometime. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And not every school is going to have vacancies. But the, the good news is that there are some, there are some schools with vacancies. And parents, if you feel that you want to move your child to another school for whatever reason, there will be an opportunity. And this is the first time we've done this in Marion County, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ely, for bringing that to our attention. And I'm sure parents really like that information. Board members, we, in our last work session, I asked you all to put together your legislative agenda and also receive information that the Marion County Legislative Delegation will be here January 12th at the Uris Center. They will be there from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. In order for us to participate in that, if we so desire, we have to submit a request to be placed on the agenda. So I want you to be thinking about that to see whether or not we want to take our, our agenda to our legislative committee, you know, senators, our representatives, and it will be at you. So think about that, you know? I also want to thank Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Tomlin, for sending out the memo to us requesting, I'm gonna read it to you, board members, so that you remember. At most board meetings and work sessions, our administrative team prepares and presents information for the board that we think may be beneficial to you. As we near the midpoint of school year 2014 to 2015, I would like to prepare a mid-year report for you, but I want to be able to address your particular interests. As discussed at the November 20th work session, please forward to me any and all requests so staff can adequately prepare a presentation for, for you. I look forward to hearing, hearing from you. So please pay attention to your memo, and if you have any ideas or anything you would like to hear from the superintendent, please submit it to him. Thank you.
I believe that Mr. James prepared a really good.
He did. I saw that. Yes, it was very good. I commended it on the early, yes.
Really good letter to the superintendent.
Yes, he really did. Mr. James submitted one already, and it's well-prepared.
Ms. Boynton, the things that we talked about tonight and what you heard tonight, if the superintendent could get that information in his midterm report, because that's where I was, I was hoping all this information that we got tonight, he was asking for it in his midterm report. If you present it to him, he will present it to us. So I don't want people to think that it's something that has fallen to us because he's asking for that information.
Yes, sir.
And he will present it to us at midterm. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lake, do you have anything you would like to say?
Just to remind the board that we have an attorney-client session tonight. Other than that, I don't have anything additional, additional to add, Ms. Boynton.
And, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. Board, you know that the board chair makes a number of appointments to, for board members to serve in different capacities. You also may know that I serve on the Public Education Foundation Board, and we have frequent visits from Ms. Zanetti from that fine board. Mrs. Boynton will be paying particular attention to that appointment, I'm sure, in the month of January. And whoever is chosen or selected, whether it be herself or someone else, I encourage you to participate. A reminder also that we have no school tomorrow. And for students, we have, again, for your information, no computer access tomorrow, beginning at midnight tonight. And our main office will be open, but many of our schools and many of our district offices will be closed because our employees are dependent upon using our computers. And then finally, a happy Thanksgiving to all, and if you're traveling, please travel safely. That's all I have, Mrs. Boynton.
Just one more thing regarding computers.
Okay, just a moment. Ms. Flotketter, do you have anything you want to say?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Yeah, speaking of computers, I meant to comment about that. I received some phone contact and email contact from teachers this weekend where the computers were down and the teachers did not know about it. And some of the kids, their, the parents were calling the teachers at home on the weekend and emailing them that the computers were down, they could not access the information that they needed. And teachers that were giving, I had one teacher that's given a test apparently today. They could not access anything over the weekend. And apparently, on Sunday, some kind of message popped up that as, at a certain time, that everything would magically come back on. And I really think that we need to be very respectful. The IT department really needs to be very respectful of our teachers. And when it looks like we're going to have something down, because it sounded to her, finally in the end, like it was a planned downing or something. I don't know whether it was an accident or something, but it said that this delay would be until a certain amount of time. But the teachers were not, anyway, the, the teachers were not notified of this, of this, of this time down. And they were, it completely monopolized some teachers' times over the weekend because they, they had given students large projects that they needed to access their textbook. It was their digital textbook issue, too. They couldn't reach the digital textbooks. And they said, "If we're going to have digital textbooks, then we need to have access to them or not do it because it's causing teachers turmoil," so. If anybody knows what I'm talking about.
I have no comment, no.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. At this time, the chair recognizes the board's attorney, Stephen Lake.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. School board members, on behalf of Attorney Gary Sanders with the Law Firm of Vice Cole, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation style Camisha Townsend versus the Marion County District School Board pursuant to Section 286.011, Sub 8 Florida statutes. I've requested a session with the board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategy in regard to this pending litigation. I've asked the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of the session and the names of the persons attending to be published. As required by this statute, only the superintendent or designee, board members, and legal counsel can be present. I've asked a court reporter to record the session, as is also required by statute. The court reporter's notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flotketter as clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public record.
We acknowledge your request. The terms appear to be in compliance with Florida statutes. Board members, you have heard our attorney's request. As chair, I announce, I announce an attorney-client session. The statute states that I also must announce the commencement of the session, the estimated length of, of the session, and the names of the person attending. The session will commence as soon as the room is cleared, and the court reporter is set up following a five-minute recess to clear the room. It will last approximately one half hour. The names of the persons attending are Angie Boynton, Carol Ely, Bobby James, Kelly King, Nancy Stacy, Superintendent George Tomlin, Attorney Gary Sanders, and Attorney Stephen Lake. After dealing with student disciplinary matters, I would declare a brief recess to be followed by an attorney-client session. Before addressing expulsion, expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November the 7th, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who would wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 15-13, JD 15-14, JD 15-15, JD 15-16, JD 15-17, JD 15-18, JD 15-19, and JD 15-21E with educational service, services through the first semester of the 2015 to 2016 school year.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Ely. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Opposed, like sign. The motion passed. Thank you, board members. The business and televised portion of this meeting is hereby concluded and the meeting is recessed at 6:21 PM to prepare for the attorney-client session.